The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibah County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
This meeting of the Starble Board of Aldermen will now come to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance to be followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Before I open the floor for possible revisions, I've got a couple that relate to the speaker's list for the public hearing tonight. The first is, Richard Mullenax was left off of the list in error. And he noted that he wishes to speak but doesn't wish to be identified as either for or against. So please note, Mr. Mullenax, at the beginning of your speaker's list, identified with neither side. Is there an objection? Objection, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I want to be recognized.
Alderman Perkins.
Mr. Mayor, just some brief housekeeping matters. I get to this board meeting and I see a table stacked full of correspondence. And I hope that we're not going to consider this matter tonight. You know, I have to be prepared when I get here. I mean, and maybe other people have a thing to do, but you know, I've got all this stuff here when I get here. Now, secondly, I get another beer ordinance when I get here. And I hope this is not the ordinance you're going to pass, that you're going to consider tonight, or the board is going to consider. I get here, I have about numerous of them in my package. So I don't know what change, if any, of this is going to tell me. If it has any change, we need to table this and take this up the next time. And my last housekeeping matter that I want to bring up respectfully at this time. Of course, everything I read in the newspapers, it's not true because it's not true because there's some mistakes about what this proposed ordinance requires. But the thing that's relevant here, just in reply to the newspaper article in the Starble News this morning, it mentions, and I'm talking, and if this is true, it mentions that the hearing will be held short. Thirty minutes for yea and thirty minutes for nay. Now, we have to realize that, you know, that we are bound by the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of Mississippi. In other words, there's an amendment, the Fourteenth Amendment. We have to give people due process, notice, and opportunity to be heard. The point I'm making here is, is that I saw the names in the newspaper. I'm not trying to be critical, but this is just some wisdom and it's just on my opportunity, I had to address it. But the speaker should not be limited to those whose names are in the newspaper. Now, this whiskey issue is one of the biggest issues that seems to be.
Alderman Perkins, if I might.
Don't interrupt me.
We haven't adopted an agenda yet.
I'm getting there.
If your comments are not related to the agenda, I would ask that you reserve them to the appropriate time on the agenda. But we need to adopt an agenda first.
Okay, well, this is why it's relevant, Mr. Mayor. And let me get some respect to the table. The point is relevant is because if you're going to set the agenda, and this is the relevancy here. And the relevancy is that we need to not limit the section for public hearing for thirty minutes. So that's why it's relevant. I'm asking the board, I'm appealing to the board, to allow whoever want to be heard, let them be heard. It's an important issue. This is their town, this is their city. So this is the relevancy of it. So it's a board decision. I've spoken on that. So my comment is, is to have unlimited time for whoever wants to speak. That's the comment, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for giving the floor, uh, you're the floor.
And the way I'll address that one is, the thirty minute time on the public hearing is not an agenda matter. It doesn't appear in the agenda that way. I noted at the outset of the first public hearing, as the chair, that was the parameters that I was fixing the public hearing under. Now, the appropriate way, when we get to it on the agenda, after we've adopted an agenda, for that to be addressed, if somebody wants to make a motion to appeal the decision of the chair, to adopt either a different fixed time limit for the public hearing or to not have a fixed time limit at all, that will be in order at that point. Or if somebody wants to make a motion to have the agenda worded somehow differently than it is, the first thing we've got to do is adopt an agenda. So further revisions on the agenda is Nick Pappas had originally requested an opportunity to speak. He has subsequently requested that his name be stricken. Is there any objection to that revision? Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, are there any further revisions to the agenda? Alderman Parker.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we, agenda item Roman numeral eleven, D four, was originally on the consent agenda. And I asked for it to be removed so we could review it. And I would like to put it back on, on the consent agenda. This is an item by Jeremy Tabor where he is actually in a neighborhood, Annabella, where he is actually taking a building out. And I just wanted to commend Mr. Tabor for the residents of, residents of Annabella have, he is actually agreeing to forego building another building and potential revenue so he can take that building out. So I'd like to put this back on the consent agenda.
All right. Alderman Parker has requested that item eleven be four under building codes and planning departments be placed on the consent agenda. Is there any objection to the revision? Any objection? Any objection seeing none?
Mr. Mayor, I forgot, on Roman numeral ten F, I do not object to it going on the consent agenda by the waiver of the building permit fee. I do not want it on the consent agenda.
Okay. And what I'll do, since the consent agenda has to be approved by acclamation, that item will not be on the consent agenda. It doesn't require revision. Just make note that item ten F has been removed from the consent agenda. Are there any further revisions? Any further proposed revisions to the agenda? Seeing none, a motion is in order to adopt the agenda?
I move we adopt the agenda as outlined.
And revised.
And revised.
Alderman Parker has moved that the agenda be adopted as outlined and revised. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed please signify by saying nay. This measure passes. Next is a consideration of the approval of the consent agenda. Is there any objection to the approval of the consent agenda? Is it, is written in the appendix of your packet and revised? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? The consent agenda is approved, is revised. All right. Next matter for consideration is the approval of the minutes from the July twenty first, two thousand nine, meeting that you have in your packet. Discussion? Is it a discussion or a motion to approve? Motion has been made to approve the minutes of the July twenty first, two thousand nine, meeting as written in your packet. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed please signify by saying nay. This measure passes. Okay. Next, we'll move into comments by the mayor and board. First, just want to remind everybody that Travis Outlaw Day is coming up. And it's not printed in your agenda, but it's at ten AM on August the twenty ninth. Travis Outlaw, as I'm sure most of you know, is a local celebrity now. Not only is he a local celebrity, but he is still an active part of this community. Travis, when he is not starring in the NBA, comes back in the offseason and gives his time to the community where he was raised. I hope everybody will take the opportunity to take part in this day of recognition for somebody who's done very well by our community. Next, I was asked to give an update generally of where the curbside recycling program is. And I guess I realize that we talk a lot about different steps that are being taken in the form of motions, but I think it would be helpful to provide context of where the program is and what that means to you in terms of those that are planning on having a curbside recycling, actually implement it and being a part of the program. Sharon Boyd has received approval from the board to proceed on a quote for bags. That process is moving and underway. The next and final piece before this program becomes operational is defining the relationship the city will have with Starble Recycling. And a matter to that effect that's on the agenda tonight is a proposed contract for the city to offer to Mr. Sheridan, who I see in attendance from Starble Recycling. Once the board nails out the city side, irons out the city side of it and Mr. Sheridan then gets an opportunity to negotiate his side of it and we have an agreement, the program will be ready to go. So as far as putting an actual fixed time on it, it is contingent on the agreement moving forward with Starble Recycling. And hopefully, that will be sooner rather than later. Additional comments by board members?
I've got a comment.
Alderman Perkins.
I'd like to clarify Alderman Perkins' comments about the proposed ordinance. There are two proposed changes as part of the ordinance that has been reduced to writing and was included on your board packet on the table today. Those two clarification, or those two changes. One is Sunday sales, sale of alcohol on Sunday from eleven AM to ten PM. The second, the second proposed change is the distance and how the distance is measured from church, school, daycare, funeral home. In the previous ordinance, the ordinance stated that the distance was measured from the nearest point of restaurant and bar establishment to the property line of the business of the church, school, kindergarten, or funeral home. And then the amended change, that distance is measured from the closest point of the restaurant or bar to the footprint of the building or church. The distance remains the same at two hundred and fifty feet for off-premise, or for on-premise, I'm sorry. The on-premise consumption in the original ordinance was a hundred and that will remain the same. So two proposed changes is where those distances are measured and Sunday sale allowance from eleven to ten. That is both on and off-premise consumption.
Further comments? Further comments from the board? Are there any further comments? Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll move into citizen comments. Anyone wishing to speak, please approach and state your name and you'll be recognized for a maximum of three minutes.
Good evening to the mayor and board. My name is Alvin Turner. You really have the citizens back against the wall. Citizens are not happy. Citizens feel like that. It's still getting better, but it won't get worse. A lot of citizens know that if you're caught drinking near a church or close to a church, you'd be put in jail. Because that is sacred. There's nothing to play with. So the people feel like that. We have but one option. And that is law enforcement to help us try to protect ourselves. So like, we would like for MSU law enforcement, Starble Police Department of Law Enforcement, and the Oktibah County Sheriff's Department to help us protect and take care of ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Further citizen comments? Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir. Chris Taylor, Ward Seven. My thing is whenever we have a hot issue like this, we need to look into moving this location so that everyone can come in and make their comments. Because right now it's just too small. You've got people all in the hallway. Two weeks ago, I could not even, could not get in. So we need to look at moving it to a new location.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Honorable mayor and aldermen, I express agreement with those, Julia Williamson. Thank you. I express agreement with those who expressed their opinions last time we met, the opinions that were against the proposed amendments. I'd like to add my voice on the following concerning hospitality to internationals. That was brought up last time. I have lived in many overseas countries and I have seen people from many different backgrounds. And they have no problem when there is some restriction put upon them in terms of alcohol sales or providing hospitality. I have seen people say, we really appreciate this. We didn't know we could have such a good time without alcohol. And so I don't think that that should be how we receive internationals and the kind of hospitality that we show to them. I don't think that needs to depend on what kind of availability we have for alcohol in the, for sale somewhere. You need to know that my background is not one of being against drinking entirely. And there have been times when I have drunk, but I have realized that I have offended others. And let me just share, we have just come back from a trip to Russia. And in the newspapers, it was shared that fifty-two percent of the vehicle accidents and serious injuries had to do with addictions, including alcohol. And I think they focused on the alcohol itself. I don't think we need to be a country moving in that direction. Allow me to ask each of you as aldermen to consider the real question. Is the question of, do we need to do this because everybody else does it? Or are we making our decision on the basis of what we know is truly best for the community and for the citizens? The ordinance as it stands, without amendment, does not dictate abstinence. It simply allows for the public to accept the minority and out of respect for them and their opinions to say, okay, for one day of every week, so much as in our power to do so, we are willing for that one day to limit the use of alcohol. Any who wish to drink in their homes during this day are free to do so. It only requires a little planning to make their purchases on Saturday or have their events within a home situation. Thank you for listening and considering what Jesus would have you do. Yes, he turned water into wine, but his first concern was one of compassion for the multitudes without a shepherd. What kind of shepherd will you be as you vote on this issue? Thank you.
Ms. Williamson, I think it's your name that perhaps is in error down on the public hearing. Do you still wish to speak during the public hearing?
This is fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
So without an objection, please just note that Julia Williams, but actually Williamson, will be deleted from the public hearing. Any objection? Seeing none, we'll continue with public comment. Ms. Isaac.
Good evening, board. Alderman, this is my alderman, Mr. Ward Perkins, this is my friend. I would just like to say, as I come to you today, we, on last time we met and we came up to the meeting, the only thing that we talked about was the alcohol sale. I came to you and asked you about the sirens. It's tornado season. It's going to be storm season soon. But I haven't heard any response about that. You know, we need to get about the business of doing the business of the city. Alcohol sales, fine. If they're going to have, fine. But it's against my principles to have. It's against that. But I would just like to say, if y'all would look into other issues. It's issues here in the city, like, you know, that we could do. Police building. We're supposed to be building a police department or, you know, somewhere for them to go and do something for the public drunking. I pay taxes. I don't know how many more may pay taxes, but I pay taxes here in Starble, Mississippi. And my tax dollars are enough, I think, to help get along with this city. So please, let's send a note to alcoholics, send a note to drugs, and the young man that was here last time. I commend him for writing that letter to the Starble Daily News. He had parents that would probably, when he go off to college, won't check do they serve liquor or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Isaac. Further citizen comments?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mark Ivey. And I just want to comment on the alcohol sales on Sunday. If you add another day of alcohol sales, that increases your drinking. Does it not increase your deaths and your accidents? I have a number of friends that have died from alcohol and car wrecks. I've got a number of friends that are in prison or in jail. I myself used to drink and nearly died. As a matter of fact, I did die and was revived from alcohol poisoning. I've had a number of wrecks, more than I can count. But I do know that most of those accidents I had were on Sunday, where I had gone to buy alcohol on a day that I couldn't get it somewhere else. So I just ask that you don't approve this.
Thank you, Ms. Ivey. Further citizen comments? Yes, ma'am. Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Robert Gunn and I reside in Ward Five. My wife and I are personally opposed to the Sunday sale of alcohol and for a lot of reasons. One reason being, in two thousand eight, there were actually two hundred and ninety-eight alcoholic deaths in the state of Mississippi. The local newspaper, when you pick it up and read it, DUIs, it's full of them. It's actually a myth to think that Starble has to be progressive by having alcohol sales on a Sunday. I've read that in the newspaper. I've also read that it helps your health. Really, the only thing that alcohol helps is those who make it and those who sell it. It's actually my opinion and a lot of other people's opinion in the city of Starble that this issue should really be settled by the thirteen thousand seven hundred registered voters and not seven members of the board. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn.
Further comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, mayor and board. My name is Ethel Wiss. I'm not here about the alcohol sales. I'm here about, and I reside on Hendrix Road in Starble. They came out last year and put a sewer line down in our community. And when I was told that they was come back and prepare our yard the way they found it, and it's almost been a year and my yard is still a mess and water sits up in my yard. I have called, talked to Doug Daven, he told me they was coming out there. That would've been a month ago. No one's been out there yet. So that's one of my comments. Y'all can get somebody to come out there and prepare my yard back the way they found it, I'm fine. But the other comment I got, it's about our road. I've been out there fifteen years. I've been up to this board meeting, I don't know how many times, trying to get our road fixed. We can't get gravel, we can't get our ditches dug out for water coming off the main road, down the loud road and sit up. We have kids, they have to go to school and meet the buses. The buses can't come down there to pick our kids up. I don't think that's right. Just like the lady said, we pay taxes, just like everybody else in Starble. And we can't get our road graded or rocks or something to try to get back and forth into our houses? If y'all can see about getting something done, we, I don't see something the road paved around here. We asked for paved, we asked for gravel to get our road smoothed out so we can get back and forth to our homes. And our kids won't have to go stand in the rain to catch the bus while they're out in the cold. I got a grandbaby just starting school, head start. Have to stand in, or go up to the road to meet the bus. If y'all can see, if y'all can get something done, our kids won't have to walk so far to meet the bus, I'm fine. So if y'all can see what y'all can do for us, get our roads dug out, ditches dug out so the water can flow freely to the ditch where it's supposed to go, we're fine.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something briefly?
Yes, Alderman Perkins.
Mr. Mayor, this road is located in Ward Six. Let me just be as brief as I can and maybe with the ditches, if you would just get with your staff, real quickly about the roads. Hendrix Road was annexed into the city back in nineteen ninety-eight. That was the last, our last annexation. What the board did, Mr. Mayor and my colleagues, that the board passed an order that stated that those roads that were not designated as public roads when annexed, certain things would have to happen. So when we annex Hendrix Road, Jesse Road, Fannadel, Treasure Lane, Geechy Lane, were not designated as public roads. And of course, Geechy has done what it necessary. But this is what the board required. The board said that if, it's in an order on the minutes to say, if you, if the landowners of the area in question would deed over the proper width in land so we can own it by virtue of a warranty deed, then once it's presented to the board, then the board would accept it. Now, Hendrix Road has been here with an attorney at one time, but they have not, to my knowledge, given the board what it requested. The board said, well, we need a specification as determined by the city engineer. And Mr. Wells was the engineer at that time. And so I'm not aware, and I like to see them do that. But the bottom line is, Mr. Mayor, that the board said that this is private property and we cannot go onto this property to do work. So maybe if we could have Ms. Brule or somebody with the staff to sit down and just tell what's remaining to be done. Because Geechy was in the same situation, Geechy Road. But they did it that way, so we accept it so we can maintain it. And certainly, Mr. Mayor, just an interest of time here. If you could have Ms. Brule or your designated staff to meet with her to show, and tell what's remaining to be done to satisfy the board order.
Yeah, we will.
Well, we did that one year. We did all of that. We got the law used paid for the warranty deeds and all of that. And then when we came back before the board, they changed it to something else. And we don't have that kind of money to be going back and forth to pay for warranty deeds and titles and all of that when we had that before. And then they came up with something else.
And this is, this is obviously the first.
We had deeded all of that. And then when we did it, got the warranty deeds, got the title and all of that. When we did that, they came up with something else.
And this is, this is the first I've heard of it.
Okay, I know you're the new mayor. I know you're the new. Okay, I know you're the new mayor, I know you're the new mayor.
I assure you, I'm gonna go and gather some information, and I'll get back to both of you and figure out what we can do going forward.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Further citizen comments? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen, my name is Hank Anderson. I serve as a senior pastor at the Starkville Church of God located on South Montgomery. I respect each of you, respect the office that you hold and the decisions that you have to make for this beautiful city that I've come to enjoy and love and to service pastor here. Many times, I sit in the courtrooms with young men who have suffered the consequences of alcohol, and I could quit your sermon, but I'm not here to do that. I'm here to ask you to consider the value of your office in making the decisions that you make in something of this nature. I'll never lose my respect for you because of the position you hold, the people that have placed you here. But sometimes I find myself, as a pastor in these times that we're living in now, to hear to the cry of the people many times, to compromise the message that we're required to bring before the people. And I always come to the conclusion, every Sunday before I step in the pulpit, I must not compromise what I am called upon to do, number one, by my Lord and Savior. Number two, people sometimes can put pressure on you. People sometimes require things of you that may not be your heart. But I've always found out, if I refuse to compromise what is in my heart and do the right thing, I always come out better, because I have the favor of the Lord. And there's no doubt this town has the favor of God. We have some wonderful people here. We have the university with wonderful young people, and I love and respect all of them. In fact, a number of our college students are here tonight. I have a responsibility to lead them and to share with them the responsibilities of taking a stand. I'm not against you, I'm not against anyone that's in this city, but I do oppose the alcohol on Sunday. I ask you, from the depths of my heart and the people that I represent, give strong consideration. Give us this one day, so we can rise on Monday mornings and not be affected by what may have happened. And that doesn't mean everybody's gonna go out and just get stoned drunk and those things, but if it affects one family, if it affects one life, if it affects individuals, then let's do the thing that, which is long term. That's why I can't do the compromising. It may look good for the moment, but what is the long term? The eternal effect of it? What are we gonna face in the future? So I do ask you to give strong consideration. And we love and appreciate you, and our prayers are with you, and the leadership and the hard job that you do. Lord bless you.
Thank you, Pastor Anderson. Further citizen comments? Judge, ma'am.
I'm Jim Mills, of Ward Two in Starkville, and I'm back here again tonight to ask most humbly asked each one of all of you the way, the situation of what alcohol affects people. And all I do is, I humbly ask you to consider this, because we constantly having problems. If any of y'all would take the time to come to our courtroom, city and county, the courtroom is packed, it's like it is here tonight, with people that's in trouble, and 95% of it is come from the effects of drinking alcohol. And it only causes problems, not only to the person, but take in consideration, these people have got families. Our economy is bad, and I have them to come in and want to know my son or my daughter's in trouble, and they got a $1,500 fine. And I've got two kids, and I'm working a part-time job. People are struggling. So I humbly ask you to consider not voting for a Sunday sale, because it does affect our families and the people of the city of Starkville. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge Mills. Yes, sir. Mr. Swine, you are on the list for the public hearing.
I'm afraid I'm gonna lose my place.
Honorable Mayor, my name is Ernest Griffin. I'm a student at Joseph Creek. My concern is the alcohol. I have here Sunday's paper listing, as you can see, that yellow represents young DUIs and other alcoholism. Under this list, we have a number of alcoholic arrests since, just listing from August 7th through the 13th. Forty-one arrests dealing with alcohol. Under that number, we have 25 that's under, I should say, 18 under the age of 25. We are college town, and 18, and between August 7th to the 13th, that's quite an amount of drunken driving. And my concern is about the university. When you consider, considering voting on this here for the bringing Sunday into the fold of alcohol, there are issues that I understand is why, you know, everyone had their reasons for drinking. But I'll go to the Bible listing, Job. Now, Job had a main reason to be an alcoholic, what he had lost. And I'm just saying that we please do consider the youth here, the universities, and the young kids to consider about this drinking. Sunday was supposed to set aside for the Lord. And to be able to now make it a full-blown day to drink, I oppose, but I can oppose people who, and the reasons they do drink. But I like to go back to Job again, the one man who had a reason to drink, didn't drink. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, further comments? Yes, sir.
I'm Thomas Rogers, pastor of Joseph Creek Baptist Church on 182 Starkville, and a great concern is the day that's set aside for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We know that Sunday is a day of relaxation, a day of rest, but it's also a day of fellowship, a day of family fun and gathering. I think it would be in justice to the citizens of Starkville to have a law imposed upon them, and then we as Christians, not having a day to enjoy our families after church. The great danger it poses, members rushing out of church, and all of a sudden someone run into them that, you know, drunk off of alcohol. And then the indecent exposure of alcoholism in our restaurants, while we are family, spending time together and dining in the restaurant, loud talking, fighting, all of those things that alcohol causes one to do. I ask that you all consider the citizens of Starkville and say no to bill, pass alcohol sales in restaurants on Sunday. Bless you.
Thank you, Pastor Rogers. Yes, sir.
Mayor and Board, my name's Sam Morrison. Squipped background, I'm originally from Alabama, and from near Tuscaloosa, Alabama, where I have seen, they do have Sunday alcohol sales. And I'm coming from a point where I have been a minister since I was 17 years old. I have went back on that during that time period and went back to my drinking lifestyle. And during that time period, I was here at Mississippi State in my first two semesters here, and I'm still currently a student here at Mississippi State. During that time period, I did, from, you know, my use of alcohol on the six days that we had, did see a decline in my studies. I did see a decline in my lifestyle and my life. I'm glad to say that I don't drink anymore, I don't support it at all. I'm 24 years old, and if anybody on that university that will stand before each of you and say, I'm against it, I'm against it. I'm against it, period, but I can't change, you know, alcohol sales, dog. But I also agree that we need one day, you know, give us our Sundays, give us our Sabbath, our day we go to worship, our day we go to church and have our day of rest. Give us that one day, that we don't have to worry about alcohol sales, you know, and allow the students, because I know how it is, you gotta recuperate from drinking. You know, there's such things hangover, there's such things that fix from drinking. You know, I'm not saying give them that day to recover, I'm saying give us that day, so the one of us that still believe this is a country of God, that we still live in the Bible Belt, that we have that one day that we might be able to do and continue doing what we have been doing for the last few years. Thank you.
All right. Got time for about one more public comment. Now, Mr. Mullinax, do you?
Richard Mullinax, Ward Five. A few years ago, I happened to be in Salt Lake City, and with my son, I attended the Salt Lake City City Council meeting. And just like there, here, it's still the best free entertainment in town. But what struck me about that was that anybody who came off the street, anybody, they could have five minutes to relate what their heartburn was, what their problems were. And here, we have, you know, 30 minutes for something divisive of this, and I would ask, I would think in my opinion that the board is obligated to hear anybody who has an opinion one way or the other. And so with that, I'll wait for my next comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mullinax. All right, at this time, we're going to move into public appearances, and the first public appearance we have is from Jennifer Glaze. Is Jennifer here? Ah. And Jennifer's gonna be making a presentation from the partnership requesting that the city participate in a banner program that the partnership has been putting together with the athletic department. I don't care. Jennifer?
Good evening. Thank you very much for your time tonight. I'm here on behalf of the Greater Starkville Development Partnership and the Mississippi State University Athletic Department. We have come together on an initiative that you probably should have some information in your packets about, but what we're proposing is to install light pole banners on the 18 light poles on Main Street. So basically, that would go from Mugshots down to Regions Bank, roughly. There is a design in your packet with a white background, that is an old design that has kind of been scratched, so Ms. Tyndall put new, the most revised design on your desk, which is this one right here, the maroon background. What we're asking, the athletic department has agreed to purchase the actual banners and the hardware. They're actually gonna be donating the hardware, because once the hardware has been installed, it will remain there indefinitely. When the banners come down, the hardware will remain for other organizations or whomever to put the banners up of their choice. So what we're asking tonight is for you guys to approve this initiative, approve the design, and we also ask that the Starkville Electric Department install the hardware and the banners as an in-kind service. We feel like this is a really good collaboration. We talk a lot about joining the city and the university, working more closely together. I think this is a really good start and a good example, so I hope you guys will support this, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions or comments?
I have one. I think it's a great request. Have you had a chance to speak to Ed from our electric department as far as...
Yeah, we have, and Mr. Haddaway was supportive of this initiative as well, and said that his crew should be able to manage the task.
Okay, yeah, that's what I wanted to check.
Yeah, thank you.
Further questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next order of business is the public hearing on a proposed amendment to City of Starkville Ordinance 2005-2 and the City of Starkville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Alcoholic Beverages. Before I proceed with our speakers' list, I want to, again, I guess, at this point, thank everybody in the community over the past several weeks for your participation in what has been a very civil, thoughtful, and orderly dialogue over a very divisive topic. Yeah, from the outset, I've said that my hope is, we as a community can recognize that while sometimes we might disagree and disagree vehemently with our neighbor, at the end of the day, it is still our neighbor that's on the other side of the disagreement. So with that said, we'll move through the public hearing in the wake. I will set the public hearing up, is we'll proceed through the speakers' list, alternating speaker for speaker against, and then if there's any additional time remaining in the 30-minute block that I'd set aside, we'll recognize comments from the floor, and of course, as I noted to Alderman Perkins earlier, I will certainly entertain a motion to appeal that decision if one of the Aldermen wants to make that motion. First speaker that I'll recognize is Mr. Mullinax, who wished to be identified as neither for nor against the proposal.
I think I may have expressed that concern last time on the floor, and I stand firm in that condition. I'd like to defer my three minutes of subsistence if I want to have a comment on either floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mullinax. Next, I recognize Alan Cooe, who wishes to speak in favor of the proposal.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to say that we need to be rational and realistic about this. Our daily lives in Starkville will not change for the better or worse, whether or not this ordinance is passed. We'll be a city of integrity regardless. However, I do see this as an issue of personal choice and freedom, as well as trust. To not pass the ordinance would reflect mistrust from our municipal leaders onto the constituency for whom you serve. Trust us to obey the laws as they stand, or will stand, and give us the freedom to choose the way we spend Sundays. And we'll continue to trust each of you to make the best decisions for the city of Starkville. Furthermore, Alderman Perkins, as a registered voter in your ward, which will be changing soon, I would like to express my dissatisfaction with the comments that you've made prior to this hearing. It says here, from Starkville Daily News article, which you criticized, "Starkville city officials have placed a three-minute time limit for individual comments for a total of 30 minutes, giving each side 15 minutes to speak out. If that was the inaccuracy as it lies, I understand. However, as I understand, as a former resident of Ward Six, who still has friends and family living in your ward, I would like to suggest that perhaps now is the time to secure a higher quality of life and choice and freedom for everyone, and seize your very public criticisms of your local media, as this is twice that you have now attacked a certain reporter." I would like to close, just in a note of humor here, that since this town hall trend is happening across our country, and people like to quote the founding fathers and bring it up as a, you know, secure topic as far as making your point that the Declaration of Independence was actually drafted in a tavern. Hate to say it, but either way, doesn't know either way if it was a Sunday or not. Maybe we should have given somebody a choice, either way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooe. Next speaker is a speaker opposed to the proposed change, and it is Marnita Henderson.
I'm Marnita Henderson, I live in Ward One, and I apologize for reading my statements, but that's the only way I can get it done in three minutes, because if I speak, it would not get done in three minutes. I know each of you have campaigned in your ward over the last few weeks, but I campaigned in every ward, and when I campaigned, I talked to the people. Starkville citizens, eight out of 10, do not want alcohol sold on Sunday. Many reasons have been discussed, and I will add a few more. You say Sunday sale will make Starkville progressive. According to Sid Salter's article in the Clare Ledger on August the 2nd, Starkville is listed as the top most progressive town in Mississippi. They say beauty is in the eye of the beholder. Apparently, progressiveness is also. You say we must sell alcohol on Sunday to keep customers from going to Columbus and Tupelo. How can this be when Columbus, Tupelo, and West Point are all watching to see if Starkville passes this, so they can follow suit? I'm retired, I get to watch the news every day at noon, so I hear this over and over. Who's telling the truth? Do they have Sunday sales or not? Are we competing with them on Sunday all day? Are we competing with them on Sunday already? Starkville is a certified retirement community. Does the sale of Starkville alcohol on Sunday help draw new retired residents? I think not. Recently, a couple in their fifties came to Starkville. They arrived later on Friday night, enjoying local residence to eat at a restaurant on Main Street. It was after nine o'clock. When they came out of the restaurant, what they observed on Main Street bordered on being obscene behavior. The lady told her husband, "We can save our money. It would cost us to move to Starkville. We can see everything we've just seen in St. Louis." I read where one of you said, "We must compete with other S E C schools." When did fans decide to attend a sporting event due to whether alcohol is for sale on Sunday or not? The last I heard, they came to watch games, and then they decided when and where they would go to drink. They do not come according to the hours of alcohol sale. As fall semester begins, I read of all schools that are trying to reduce alcohol consumption by their students, but yet you want to make it more available. I hope you never have to stand by a friend or family member to view the body of the results of a drunk driver. I've been there. It is no fun. It also is no fun to see that person who is driving the car be sentenced to fifty-eight years in prison. His life is also over. If you've never entered a jail cell and had the door closed behind you and hear the final ring that it sounds when that click goes, you ought to visit, because by passing ordinances that you have, you're sentencing some people just to this. Your hands are no longer clean. Final request, if you feel you must proceed with this, at least let the people vote. If it passes by sixty percent, so be it, but then it is a decision of the community, not the decision of seven people. If facility owners were held liable for the activity of the alcohol, after alcohol consumption in their business, this discussion would end right now. One sentence. It is not about tax revenue, but about business owners who worship the almighty dollar and want to line their pockets. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Next speaker is a speaker for the proposed change, and it is Bethany Stitch. Bethany here?
Hello. My name is Bethany Stitch, and I live in Ward One. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the proposed alcohol ordinance adjustments. First, for those of you willing to support the sale of alcohol on Sundays, I want to thank you for your courage and leadership on the issue. I know it has not been easy on you or your families, and I'm personally very grateful for your wish. Second, to those of you who are not willing to support the sale of alcohol on Sundays, I hope in the future we will find projects with which we can all work and continue to create a better, stronger, and more resilient Starkville. The heart of any town is its main street. A vibrant and lively downtown business core is essential to the health of the community. The character of our downtown core should be a seven-day balanced combination of our churches, our restaurants, and our retail outlets. In the future, I hope we can work together toward this goal. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Stitch. Next speaker is a speaker opposed to the proposed change, and it is Mr. Buck Swain.
My name is Buck Swain. And Mr. Mayor and the Board of Aldermen, all of you all have a big responsibility. Monday morning, this was the headlines in Monday morning's paper, drunk driving, over the limit, under arrest, it's crackdown time. Now, this can be stopped. If y'all will vote this thing out, I don't mean, I'm, I'm not picking news there. Okay. I've got to go to my notes. I'll go back and start again. Honorable Mayor and Board of Members, I want to thank you for this opportunity. First things first, I'm a little nervous. It is all about money. It is not really about the growth of Starkville. Starkville has grown without Sunday sales. Our city has grown larger than Columbus or any town around here without whiskey sales on Sunday. I am speaking today for a very, very large group of Christian-thinking people. Can y'all hear me back there? Who think we should keep Sunday as a day of worship. Please join this group in praying that alcohol sales on Sunday will never happen. We only have three minutes to plead against something that will affect the people for a long, long time. So, Mr. Mayor and Mr. and Mrs. Aldermen, please vote against Sunday sales on alcohol. I want to thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All I got to say.
Next, we have a speaker for the proposed change, and that speaker is Jay Yates.
Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen, my name is Jay Yates. I'm a, a resident of Ward One. I support seven-day sales of alcohol for economic reasons. This will mean more jobs in a tight economy, more taxes when we, when we really need them in our local government, a positive, and a positive stance when it comes to developing the long-term retail market here in Starkville. It will increase tourism dollars as it relates to Mississippi State functions on the weekends. We have a great community, and the thriving restaurant industry in Starkville is a testament to the hard work and ingenuity that makes our country great. Letting us do what we do best is the right thing to do. I agree that there are real problems in our community, but they are not caused by restaurants serving alcohol. This board was elected not only to encourage smart growth and help our community achieve the potential that exists here, but to create real solutions to those real problems. And I think the board and Mayor flies me for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. The next speaker is a speaker opposed to the proposed change, and that speaker's identified in the packet, although I have a note, uh, that Deputy Clerk wasn't sure on the spelling. It's Sam Bullington?
Stan.
Stan. Yes, sir. Sorry.
Sir, last name Druck. My name is Stan Bullington. My wife, Leanne, and I have lived in Ward Three for the last twenty-two years. We are strongly opposed to the proposed amendment to Starkville's alcohol ordinance. We contend that no compelling reasons for amending the ordinance have been put forward. Some proponents of Sunday alcohol sales have argued that this issue is one of personal liberty. Is it? Of course it is. Virtually every ordinance we could name is related to the personal liberties of our citizens. Speed limits, zoning laws, leash laws, the tobacco ordinance, et cetera, et cetera. All restrict the liberties of citizens, yet most citizens can clearly see the need for such restrictions. Are some restrictions on alcohol use needed? Clearly, they are. I don't believe many would argue for legalized sales to fifteen-year-olds, for example. With regard to personal liberty, then, the question should be one of reasonableness. Is the current ordinance, which allows sales on six days a week, a reasonable restriction or not? We believe that it is reasonable. In fact, we would contend that there are thousands of Starkville residents who would ask that you protect our liberty for one single day per week to enjoy a meal with our families at our fine restaurants in an environment that is not just tobacco-free, but alcohol-free. A second major issue in this debate is money. Proponents of Sunday sales argue that this is an economic development issue. Should money be an issue in this debate? I believe that it should. However, questions relating to the economics of public policies must be analyzed with respect to both benefits and costs. We have heard about projected benefits, the expected increases in tax revenue, however, we've heard very little about costs. Proponents have argued that our police force can surely enforce the law seven days a week rather than six. That is true. What should be obvious is that they cannot provide expanded services at no cost. How many more officers will we need? How much more overtime pay will we need in order to effectively police a city with increased access to alcohol? How much lost productivity will our businesses see on Mondays? We don't know the answer to these questions. Until the answers are known, the true economics of this issue are unknown. Finally, we would argue that this issue is, most importantly, one of public safety. Suppose that because of your vote today, this proposed amendment passes sometime in the future, maybe next month, next year, or even ten years from now, a serious accident almost certainly will occur late on a Sunday evening. If your child or ours is killed or maimed in this accident, will your vote have been a wise one? We urge you to vote no on the proposed amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bullington. Next speaker is a speaker for the proposed change, and that speaker is Ashley Murdock.
Um, hello. My name is Ashley Murdock, and I'm a resident of Ward Five, and I am in support of Sunday sales because of its impact on Starkville as a progressive and open-minded community. Um, a progressive and open-minded community appeals to all types of people. It is diverse and appeals to those who have many different ideas, and it's tolerant of others. Um, a progressive community is not indicated by the number of bars, nor is it a community that uses fear to control others. It is not a community distorting statistics of rates and D U I's. It is a community where the citizens are open-minded and open to positive change. It is a community that does embrace family and promotes public health, education, and safety while encouraging its citizens to think independently and act responsibly. Sunday sales will give citizens the opportunity to purchase a legal beverage, an activity that responsible adults may choose to do or not to do. Therefore, in order for Starkville to grow and improve, we all should keep an open mind and embrace progress. An anonymous person once said, "An open mind leaves a chance for someone to drop a worthwhile thought into it." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murdock. Next speaker is a speaker opposed to the proposed change, and that speaker, again, I have a note, uh, not sure on the spelling, is Bobby Conlon. Bobby Conlon is somebody who might have been confused, uh, or Deputy Clerk might have got?
I think that's Bobby Coleman.
Bobby Coleman.
He may be out in the hall.
Is Mr. Coleman here or out in the hall? Is there anybody that, that thinks it might have been recorded as Bobby Conlon in error? Okay. All right. Since that would exhaust the speakers, uh, opposed to the proposed change, uh, I'll recognize a speaker from the floor that's opposed, if you'd like to speak. Mr. Turner.
Um, a lot of people, we have problems of people not taking their medication just drink. Officers tell them if they don't want to leave, they can't. Uh, put their, and their finger until they know they can't. Tell the officer, "I ain't drunk." Our, uh, each generation will get weakened wild. And it's sad that there are people that visit here, people drop a Mickey, and they do things that they wouldn't do if they were sober. So how can we help the center if we can encourage them to do much more? And we hope that neither one of y'all are alcoholics.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Now, we'll recognize the next speaker on the speakers' list for those supporting the proposed change. Next speaker is Jim Gafford.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. First, I'd just like to thank all of you, regardless of whether we agree on this issue or not, for having the, the courage to address this in a, in a civil, straightforward, and timely manner. But I have to take some issue with some of the recent dialogue in both public and private discourse from some of those opposed, and that will be the fear-mongering tactic that has been employed. This tactic is naturally being used as an attempt to reach a certain end, and that being the defeat of this measure. However, there seems to be no regard for fact, nor for the damage that thoughtless comments may cause. Talk of violence against women, children, or police officers is not only unsubstantiated by fact, but dangerous, and the end does not justify the means. The truth about seven-day sales is that it will not result in an increase in dangerous or criminal behavior. We know this to be true from anecdotal evidence from our regional peer communities and through examination of studies conducted or published by various governmental or scholarly outlets, such as the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, the Journal of Alcohol Studies, the Journal of Studies on Alcohol, and the Journal of Accident Analysis and Prevention, and that's just to name a few. All sources agree that seven-day sales, whether they have no effect on D U I or other alcohol-related crimes, will result in a reduction of these crimes. Now, it is true that Starkville does have a high D U I arrest rate, and that we have a large population of individuals prone to risky behavior. Those are college students. However, the arrest rate should only highlight the excellent job our police department is doing to enforce the law. Furthermore, our city officials, both past and present, should be commended along with the police department for seeking outside support for the enforcement of alcohol-related laws, and this is evidenced by our grant that's funding our D U I enforcement officers. It should be noted that while we have a high D U I arrest rate, we do not have a high rate of other measurable alcohol-related incidents, such as crashes. From the numbers available from the Starkville Police Department and comparisons with our neighboring communities, one cannot conclude that selling alcohol on Sunday will result in a threat to our safety. The only conclusion to be drawn is that our city is doing an excellent job of enforcement. Enforcement is only one aspect of ensuring the public complies with the law. Education and public acceptance of the law is often more critical, and it's a difficult task to deep respect the law if the law is inconsistent. Passage of the proposed amendments will make our laws more consistent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gafford. Is there anyone from the floor wishing to be recognized for three minutes speaking again? Yes, sir. And please state your name.
My name is Paul Prosser. I'm with, uh, Ward, uh, live in Ward Five, excuse me. There was a number of different issues that were spoken of. Uh, one of them was religion, and I do believe religion is a issue. I am a minister, and, uh, there are many times that I, that I personally believe, as an example, that, for instance, the Starkville Electric Department may have charged me the wrong, uh, amount of my electricity, but I still pay the bill. It's the same thing with God. Regardless if you believe in God or not, we will all be held accountable for the things that we do in this life. Civil liberties. Some will argue that we infringe on the civil liberties of those that smoke weed, crack, meth, or any other illegal drug. How about we legalize them as well? Can you imagine eating dinner when the guy next to you is taking a snort at the, at the table? The fish you feel is the same we feel when we sit at the table and we see someone drinking next to us. Uh, some, some families take their families out on Sundays, knowing that they won't have to deal with that. As far as, as far as me taking my family out, that's one day that I know that I won't have to deal with someone next to me drinking, overdrinking, or, uh, consuming alcohol, or when I leave, that I have to worry about them being in the streets. Also, thinking of legalizing illegal drugs, what they would do for our economy. If you was to legal, legalize all these different, uh, drugs, that would definitely improve our economy, but as the gentleman mentioned before, we have to weigh the consequences with the benefits. With every benefit, there is a consequence. Even with the seven-day sale, we always look, we are looking at the benefit of the seven-day sale. If one day extra doesn't make a difference, why are we here? All these people are here for one day, so there's a benefit to that one day in the economy, but there's also more consequences for that one day. We have to look at both sides of it. And also, as far as the economy goes, it will benefit those that sell alcohol. It will, I, I agree, it does, uh, one day will benefit the economy. It does agree for those that sell alcohol. The city will benefit from the D U Is, from the fines. The hospital will benefit from more accident victims. Funeral homes will also increase. Now, I know some say that, again, this is just one day, but we have to look at all, all, both sides of it. One other last thing I would like to say, I thought we elected leaders, not followers. I keep hearing that everyone is, with, I keep hearing that everyone else is, what everyone else is doing, what other cities are doing, all the studies from other cities. Uh, if, when this body ran on a platform of change, Starkville is strategically situated and has resources to be a leader of Mississippi. We can't come close to our potential by just following in the footsteps of others, for others. It seems that the Aldermen have already made up their mind. Uh, it falls on the mayor to make the final decision. By being a leader, he can, uh, by being a leader that we need, you can vote no for this by veto, or you could vote yes for this by doing nothing.
Thank you, Pastor Prosser. All right. The final speaker on our speakers' list is a speaker for- All right, the final speaker on our speakers list is a speaker for the proposed change, and that speaker is Brady Dixon.
Thank you, everyone. I'm just going to be as brief as I can here. A lot of great points tonight, I think, actually on both sides. From my perspective, I've lived and worked in a lot of places around the country. Some had very strict laws on alcohol, more so than Starkville. Some had very loose alcohol laws. Really didn't seem to be much difference between the amount of crime in these towns, the amount of fun in these towns, if that's what you think alcohol brings. That's not the issue. There's a whole lot of other things that Starkville brings to the table that makes or breaks the town. Alcohol is not one. How did I arrive at my decision then to support it? It is a civil liberties issue. I support anything that increases personal freedom and perhaps more importantly, personal responsibility. A lot of points have been made tonight about how, well, maybe we should sell crack, or maybe we should be able to drive 100 miles an hour. No, that's silly, and I think they make great points there. However, you aren't allowed to smoke crack six days a week. You're able to drink six days a week. So it's not consistent. We're sending a poor message by saying that we can pick and choose when and where you can do things. That's where the liberty comes in. If it's legal, it's legal. If it's not, we need to revisit the issue. I hate that this has been so divisive. I like how full this room is, though. This is why Starkville is great. Alcohol or not, this is it. Those towns I've lived in, most of the decisions were made by one or two politicians and one or two rich people. They never would have had this. And so what we disagree on now will more than likely have something to agree on in the future. Everybody at the board, everybody out here. So I encourage everybody to remain active. Regardless of what happens tonight, I'm going to still be following the issues, and I hope to be standing side by side in agreement with some of the people that disagree with me tonight. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
That concludes our speakers list and actually rounds out almost to the second, the 30 minutes that I had set aside. I will entertain a motion to appeal that decision if anyone wants to extend the public hearing. Is there any motion to appeal the decision to limit the public hearing to 30 minutes? Any motion? Okay. One of the other things that I noted we would do at the outset of this process on August 4th is anything that came through the mayor's office, we would keep a record of, circulate to the board, and the board members have a copy of that.
Yes, it's on the table.
And a summary of that correspondence, which is by email, are emails in support of the proposed changes from Dr. Gerald Emerson, Brady Dixon, and Robert McMillan. Neutral but vocal comments from Richard Mullenax, Dasha Redine, Ph.D., and inquiry from a member of the press, Robbie Covlins, and comments in opposition to Sunday sales from Jim and Lisa Little and Dale W. Strickland. Now open the floor to comments and questions from the board of aldermen.
I got one comment. Got a couple of things. I think the parents of Mississippi State, send their student to Mississippi State, they don't send them here too. They run from bar to bar. They send them here to get education. And I think that's what they send their kids here for, to get education, not to here for, to become home drunkards and alcoholics. They send them here to get education. In this letter, this article this young boy wrote, 13-years-old, even though some of the things have changed, but I want to read this. "A Young View on Sunday: Alcohol Sale Issue. I recently attended a board audit meeting on August 4th at which there was much debate on various proposals concerning sale of alcohol. Although I am only 13, I have objection to all three proposals. They are as follows. First, some people drink excessively. If alcohol sale was ten, it would encourage them to drink more. That would create more problems, searching, drunk driving, fighting, even further into the night. Second, if the reduced distance at which alcohol could be sold was to pass, and my house was a church, the house across the street could be a bar. Search closed quarters should not be allowed. The education and worship that goes on in the school and the church should not be mixed with the wild partying in the bars and pubs. Third, I am a Christian, and God created Sunday as a day for us to concentrate on Him, and selling alcohol on His day would only take away from that. That is my personal standing on the proposal concerning the sale of alcohol. If a 13-year-old child wrote this, what are we thinking about?"
Further comments, questions from the board?
Mr. Mayor, let me be recognized, please. Mr. Mayor, when I finish my comments, I'll announce to the chair that I'm concluded. So I'm going to speak on a number of issues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me begin by saying that I've been on this board for more than 16 years now, and you know, and this is the fourth regular meeting of this board. And before we can get our seats warmed good, here we are talking about a whiskey bill. Talking about a whiskey bill. You know, selling whiskey, beer, and alcohol on Sunday is not the answer. You know, in this proposed ordinance, they're proposing to sell whiskey, beer, and alcohol from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. every Sunday. Now, I go to church every Sunday, you know, and I'm going to refer to 11:00 a.m. as preaching time. You know, that's time to be in church to get a word. You know, Sunday is a sacred day. You know, Sunday is a holy day. You know, 11:00 in the mornings, you know, we need to be ready, get ready to stand up and read from our King James Version, whatever verse you want to read from, and sing, "Amazing grace, thank you, Lord." You know, God watched over me while I was sleeping last night. You know, my alarm clock did not wake me up this morning. You know, that's why I want us to defeat this Sunday sale. You know, I have a good God. You know, somebody spoke earlier about the Lord is our shepherd. Yes, that's what the 2030 Psalms says, "The Lord is my shepherd, and I shall not want." You know, He's my light and my salvation. You know, this time that they want to set aside, we need to be in church. You know, this is the Sabbath day. We need to remember the Lord and keep Him holy. You know, when I was coming up, I'm the last child of six on a born and raised on a country farm, and my mother and daddy, they struggled to make ends meet. They said, "Son, one thing you're going to do is just, you're going to go to church on Sunday." You know, both my parents have gone on to live the Lord, but you know one thing I remember? I remember what they taught me. Anybody here can attest to you that I'm in church every Sunday morning. You know, we, you know, and let me talk about, you know, they talk about this economic development. You know, this is nothing but a smoke screen. There probably will be somebody come behind me. There is nothing economic development about this whiskey issue. You know, you know, you know, I watch the news, I watch the news from a local official in the Golden Triangle area, and they said, "Well, anything we can do to get money during these tough economic times, let's do it." But money is not everything. It's not going to get you into heaven. Money is not everything. You know, what business has said that it is coming to Starkville, Mississippi if we legalize whiskey on Sundays? Nobody at this table can tell me. I challenge them to tell me. What amount of revenue, if any, that selling whiskey on Sunday going to bring to Starkville? None, not much if in at all. Now, you know, if we want to bring more revenue in, you know, there are a lot of other ways and means that we can do that. And one way we can do it that comes to my mind, we can revise the formula for the distribution of the 2% tax. We give 90% of that money away to other entities. We give 40% to the parks, 15% to VCC, 15% to OCDA. We give 20% to Mississippi State and 10% to Starkville. And we only collected $129,000 out of that 2% tax money from January 2008 through December 31, 2008. Now, let's say that we revised the formula and got an additional 10%, and lowered somebody else's percentage, we get another $130,000 easily. So there's nothing but economic development. And then the minister come in from the Joseph Creek Missionary Baptist Church, and he talks about this Sunday is a Christian family-oriented dining atmosphere. You know, a lot of people that I know, and my constituents, they go out to these restaurants on Sunday after they leave church. You know, they have given their focus to God, you know, God is their Savior. You know, and let me say this, I worship a God who's worthy. I worship a God who is worthy to be praised. You know, when I go in these restaurants on Sunday, I don't need to see alcohol being dispensed and sold and consumed. I don't need to see all that. And my constituents do not need to see that. You know, and like, it's been referred here this evening, all this crying. And let's talk about this for a minute. We just had our municipal judge that come in for us just recently. Guess what he tells us? That the city of Starkville has more DUI arrests than any other city, Mr. Reporter, in the state of Mississippi, including the city of Jackson. That's the capital. And in Starkville in 2008, we had 401 DUI arrests. Now, the deacon from Joseph Creek Missionary Baptist Church talks about, talks about the police blotter. Get Sunday's paper out, I got it here on the table. Every date that you look there, there's a DUI arrest, a DUI arrest. Now, if this thing passes, I want the police chief to have these roadblocks in areas where they're selling this whiskey. You know, they only have one place, one restaurant north of 182. Now, if you want to have a roadblock, let's have it where they're selling this whiskey. And that's what we need to do. Now, with this crime, you know, we have had alarming statistics here for 2006 DUI, we had 343 DUI arrests in Starkville in 2006. 2007, 424. 2008, 401. You know, that is a lot of DUI arrests. And then just get your newspaper. Every time you look in your newspaper, there is some agony, there's some death, there's some hurt, there's some pain, and you can feel it. I don't know whether y'all have experienced death in any form or fashion in your family. I have not experienced death with any DUI-related incidents in my family, but I have lost several family members, and it hurts. And yes, the more you sell whiskey, the more the likelihood that we'll have crime in this city. If anybody tell you anything different, they are wrong. The more you sell it, the likelihood is that you're going to have crime. The likelihood you're going to have DUI arrests. You know, one thing I wish that we could do, I wish we could pass a law that require people to go to church on Sundays. You know, that's what we need. You know, that's what we need. And, you know, and, you know, and, you know, and, and I read the case, and they were just had in circuit court. If you look at the paper, Tuesday, August 4th, 2009, and it shows on one, now, you know, we have to apply some good common sense to this stuff. You know, on one side of the paper, it talked about, you know, it talks about, it talks about, it talks about an extension of hours. And then on the other side, you see an article where someone was tried, was convicted, and was sentenced, and received 60 years. These circuit judges are not playing 60 years. There are a lot of other incidents. Every time you turn around, there is something about a DUI offense. So let me say in closing here, you know, there are other municipalities, Columbus, I was coming out of court the other day, I was coming, I'm in a busy trial over there, and in the courthouse, I'm trying to walk to my vehicle, had a long day, and one of the officials say, "Well, alderman, what are y'all going to do over here in Starkville on this, on this whiskey bill?" And I said, you know, "I don't know what the board going to do. I don't discuss matters outside the board meeting." And he said, "Well, we're watching what you're going to do, and what Starkville's going to do." Then you read in the newspaper, and then Tupelo, you know, was leading municipalities being by some in this state of Mississippi, and Tupelo said, "Well, we're waiting to see what Starkville's going to do." I tell you what, we need to let them know that we're about Christianity on Sundays. We are not in the whiskey business. We are not going to be a leader in whiskey. You know, they want to see what we're going to do. Now, let me address this issue of personal choice. Now, you listen to me carefully. Now, there is no personal choice right now as to Sunday sales. Why not? Because Sunday sales is currently banned. It's not the law in Starkville, Mississippi. The law that we have is not archaic. It's not broke, and it does not need fixing. You know, that is a very good law, a very good law, and, you know, and I hope that we'll continue to show leadership on this matter and defeat this. And I urge my colleagues to make sure that they pay close attention to this, and look at the consequences, what this would do if we legalize Sunday sales in the city of Starkville. And I want to close by saying this. You know, once this issue is voted upon, and if alcohol sales is allowed for Sunday, this law is going to be here, it's going to be here, it's going to be here. This is a very important vote. This measure is going to carry some consequences. This measure could result in someone's death, someone injury, and it could cause great harm to somebody's family. I want to trust every last one of you. I want to encourage you to search your heart, do the right things, do what's right, do what's best, do what's in the benefit of the city of Starkville. And one other point that just came to me, and I was searching for a minute ago, about this personal choice, is that, you know, there is no personal choice, because let me take you back to a little bit in time, because back in 2005, 2006, this last board discussed this matter of the no smoking. People said, "Well, we have a personal charge to smoking restaurants. We have a personal choice." But what this board did, the board said, "Well, we're going to regulate this issue anyway." So the board stepped in, we disallow smoking in restaurants and public places, and I'm not aware of any business that has decreased. The environment has been real good. Other municipalities have followed our lead. Let's defeat this ordinance of the fourth, let's funeralize it. And I'd say one last thing, Mr. Mayor. If this matter passes by whatever vote, whether it's 43, 52, 61, I'm going to ask our mayor, our mayor, who walked through the neighborhoods, who walked Ward Six, who knocked on the doors in Ward Six, who walked Wards 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, who came to the churchyard tents on a Sunday morning. We ask this same mayor to stand and show that he's a real leader, and we want him to affix a veto to this matter. This matter is important. I am a native Starkvillian. This is my home. And I'll tell you one thing about this. I'm not here for show. I'm not here for my health. And my constituents keep sending me here unopposed, because they know I'm going to do the right thing. I'm going to be a strong message. I'm going to do what I believe in. I'm going to do what I think is right. So I'm asking everybody at this table, and the mayor, if he gets to have the last word, if he put the word veto on it, and I think that we will not have Sunday sales, and I encourage you, and I respectfully ask every one of you, when the roll call is made, when the roll call is made, you know, let's make sure that we are being a good and faithful servant. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further comments, questions in the board of aldermen? Comment, further comment? Seeing none, we'll now close the public hearing. I would, I guess I'm going to, without objection, move us into a five-minute recess. Is there any objection? Any objection? Objection seeing none without a five?
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavia County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.